Good evening. I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Greer Planning Commission to work. I want to thank you folks for being here tonight. If there's anyone on the commission that will need to disqualify themselves from any of the businesses before us tonight, some need to fill out a recusal form when that comes before us and step down from the panel. I don't believe that's going to affect anybody tonight, though. All right, moving on, we'll now receive the minutes from the August 21st meeting. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to look those over.
Motion approved.
Tag it.
Have a motion in a second for approval.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Asserno?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
And Mr. Holland?
Yes. All right. We will now move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. During this time, we will open and close the public hearing for each request that is before the board tonight. We will start with staff giving just the basic information for the request, and then we'll have the applicant come up to the podium here and present just the basic information for the request. Afterwards, anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against that particular request will be allowed to do so. We'll give you three minutes to come up here to the podium. If you will please, if you are going to speak, state your name and address for the record. We are recording audio and video in this room. And at that point during the public hearing, we will just hear that basic information. So if anyone is here, you have multiple people here, I don't think this is going to be an issue tonight, but I always like to say, if your neighbors already told us what you plan to say, there's no reason to rehash it because it just makes the meeting run longer. All right, so we will now open the public hearing for AN 23-07 and AN 23-010.
So this project number is AN 23-07 and AN 23-10. These are for annexation applications for two separate parcels, but they're related to the same project. The applicant is Gray Engineering. The parcel ID numbers are 5-29-00-083.02 and 5-29-00-080.04. The existing zoning is unzoned Spartanburg County, and the request is to annex and zone to RM2 multifamily residential with the intent of developing an apartment complex. Here's an aerial of the site. Here's the zoning map. The brown is RM2 multifamily residential, and the blue is S1 Services District. The future land use is mixed employment. Here's a photo, two photos of the current conditions at the site. On the left is a view of the southern parcel from Freeman Farms Road, and on the right is a view of the northern parcel from Old Jones Road. And that completes my presentation.
All right. Do we have a representative from Gray Engineering here? Come up here and just...
Good evening. My name is David Graffus, civil engineer with Gray Engineering, 132 Pilgrim Road, Greenville. Just here on behalf of the developer, requesting the annexation of the two parcels as presented and answer any questions that you may have associated with it.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against AN 23-07 slash AN 23-010? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for AN 23-07 slash AN 23-010. And we will open the public hearing for AN 23-11.
This is AN 23-11. The address is 5326 Wade Hampton Boulevard. The parcel ID number is T009040201701. The existing zoning is unzoned Greenville County, and the request is to annex and zone to C2 Commercial with the intent of building retail. Here's an aerial of the site. The surrounding zoning is C3 Highway Commercial and unzoned Greenville County. The surrounding future land use is suburban commercial. And here's a photo of existing conditions. That completes my presentation.
All right. Do we have the applicant here?
Ethan off with site design, 225 Rocky Creek Road, Greenville. And then the developer is also here this evening to answer any questions you guys may have on this project.
All right. Thanks, sir. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against AN 23-11? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for AN 23-11. And we'll open the public hearing for RZ 23-07.
This is RZ 23-07. The address is 108 South Line Street. The parcel ID number is G027000600100. The existing zoning is R75 Single Family Residential, and the request is to rezone to C1 Central Business District with the intent of developing a apartment complex. Here's an aerial of the site. The current zoning is R75 Single Family Residential. The surrounding zoning is C1 Central Business District. That is the light pink. The future land use is downtown living. And here's a photo of the current conditions at the site. That completes my presentation.
All right. Let's come back up to the podium.
Hello again. David Graffus with Gray Engineering, 132 Pilgrim Road. I'm also representing a different developer, a different project, and here to answer any questions that could come up. We can address any questions or comments.
All right. Thank you. Anyone in the audience here to speak for or against RZ 23-07? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kathleen Yevix. I own a townhome at 134 Park Avenue, right behind the Victor Park, former Victor Park property, still but soon not to be Victor property. I'm not necessarily speaking against the motion to rezone as Central Business District, but I would point out to you that as someone who's reading and trying to understand what's going on, it's very vague. And so what does Central Business District mean? It's mentioned only one time in the UDO draft, and that's under the historic overlay. I heard a mention of uses downtown living. I don't know that I've seen that defined in the future UDO draft. I don't know whether it's within the historic overlay, where the one reference to the CBD under as an arts district, or it's downtown transitional overlay. And I see no mention within the UDO about infrastructure, certainly not to agree that we're discussing infrastructure at this stage. And I also wonder whether the definition of CBD has been clearly defined, whether it's limited, especially for the south side that the railroad tracks by the past rather than a view. What should you regard this look like in terms of living and quality lifestyle? Those are all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for or against RZ 23-07? Now, I had two people signed up, Amy Hickman and Bob Costa. Would either one of you like to...
Well, one was actually...
Please come to the podium. Oh, she's over. She's over.
I'm sorry. I'm Amy Hickman, and I live at 240 Old Woodruff Road. And my comments are really related to RZ 2308, which is the removal of the Highway 101 overlay. And my question is, what aspects of the Highway 101 overlay, especially given that there are so many options for appeal and exceptions, why is it necessary to remove an overlay that's intended to preserve the character of our downtown in order to move forward with this development? It seems to me we are writing a blank check to a developer in order to build an apartment complex that may or may not be in keeping with what we want that neighborhood to start to look like. I want to know if there are going to be any requirements to maintain green spaces? Would there be any requirement to provide affordable housing? Do, I also want to note, it's very difficult to ask informed, intelligent questions with the amount of information that's provided on these agendas and presentations. There's just so much that we don't know as citizens. In the same way, we didn't know that this property was going to be sold, except, you know, during a month when a lot of us were on vacation. And so I really am concerned because this is a very large stretch facing a central part of our historic community.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against RZ 23-07? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for RZ 23-07, and we'll open the public hearing for RZ 23-08.
This is RZ 23-08. The address is 108 South Line Street. Again, the parcel ID number for the record is G027000600100. The existing zoning is R75 Single Family Residential, and the request is a zoning map amendment to remove the Highway 101 overlay district. Here's the aerial. Here's the current zoning of the site. The downtown overlay is shown as light blue on the left, and the Highway 101 overlay is shown on the right. So right now, we have two overlays for this one property. They both exist. And here's the photo of current conditions at the site. That completes my presentation.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against RZ 23-08? Miss Hickman already spoke, so no one else. And we will... Developer, again, anything to add? Okay. All right, so we will close the public hearing for RZ 23-08. And we will move on to new business. During this time, staff will give the full and complete report for the application that is before us, and then we'll have the developers come up and speak to us and answer any questions that we may have of the developer or of staff. During this time, if we have a question for anyone in the audience, we also have the privy to do that. We will vote to make a recommendation to city council with each of these applications. It is just a recommendation. We are not the final authority tonight. I guess these pieces of business will come before council next...
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday night in this very room, and they meet at 6:30. That'll be the last Tuesday of the month. I'm not sure of the date, but it'll be...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, next Tuesday. We encourage you to come back at that time and be here when council votes. Want to have comment, there'll be time probably for that at the beginning of the meeting to sign up during the public forum. Okay, we will move on now to new business. First piece of business will be AN 23-07 and AN 23-10.
Once again, this is for project numbers AN 23-07 and AN 23-10. The addresses for these two different parcels are Freeman Farm Road and Old Jones Road, and the request is to annex and zone to RM2 multifamily residential with the intent of creating an apartment complex. Here's the aerial. Here's the zoning map. Here's the future land use. Here is the photo of current conditions. Once again, the request is to annex and zone to RM2. The surrounding zoning and land uses are RM2 multifamily residential and unzoned Spartanburg County. The staff recommendation is approval.
All right. Would you like to come up and answer any questions?
Be glad to answer any questions associated with the annexation of the two parcels again.
We typically do this one at a time, don't we, instead of putting them together in the past? I like this. Saves us mention of time, I guess, doing it this way.
How many apartments are we...
Well, with the two, I think it's around 280, 280 to 290 in terms of the combining. I think you could possibly get, under the current zoning, up to 318, 320. But a lot has, a lot has to do with the land and the design. The topography in the land's very difficult, so we probably won't get as many units as the property would allow under current zoning. So I would, I would say somewhere between 280 and 300 as far as the number of units.
And this other piece of property already in the city?
It is not. It would need to be annexed, the sliver. It's to the east.
Yeah, the sliver. So you got, but what's your, what's your annex? Is not the totality of your development project.
That's correct. There is current, the majority of the project, yes, is, is in the city.
Correct.
And so they would have frontage along Freeman Farm and with the additional property along Old Jones Road, the frontage road in the back.
Is it just those three tracks?
Yes.
Is it?
Yes.
13, 15, about 20 acres altogether, maybe?
That's right. Just under 20 acres.
17 acres.
All right. Any further questions for the applicant or staff?
Motion approved.
Tag it.
We have a motion in a second for approval. Let's vote.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Asserno?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. All right, contact staff for next steps. We will now open the public, or the new business portion of the meeting for AN 23-11.
Once again, this is AN 23-11. The address is 5326 Wade Hampton Boulevard, and the request is to annex and zone to C2 Commercial with the intent of creating retail. Here's the aerial of the site. Here's the zoning. Here's the future land use. Here's a photo of the existing conditions. Once again, the request is to annex and zone to C2 Commercial. The surrounding zoning is C3 Highway Commercial and unzoned Greenville County. Staff recommends approval.
All right. Come up here and give us any information you may have.
Sure. So this is going to be a commercial retail center, approximately 6,000 square feet. Currently, one of the, one of the tenants is determined to be a mattress warehouse store, and the other tenant is still being marketed at this time.
What did you say it was going to be?
Mattress warehouse, the retail mattress store.
Motion to approve.
Tag it.
We have a motion in a second for approval. Vote.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Asserno?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. Thanks. Contact staff for next step. All right, we'll now open the new business portion of the meeting for RZ 23-07.
This is RZ 23-07. The address is 108 South Line Street, and the request is to rezone to C1 Central Business District with the intent of developing an apartment complex. Here's the aerial of the site. Here's the zoning map. Here's the future land use. Here's a photo of current conditions. Once again, the request is to rezone from R75 Single Family Residential to C1 Central Business District. The surrounding zoning and land uses are C2 Commercial to the south, C1 to the west, and R75 to the east. Staff recommends approval.
All right. Thank you. Again, step up here and...
Okay, so this project is more downtown. Again, it is proposed to be, proposed apartments on both sides of Park Avenue in terms of the property. And so again, I'll be glad to answer any questions associated with the rezoning of the, of the eastern portion of the, of the project. I know that a traffic study has been prepared by Kimley Horn that includes this parcel, but may not include the density, but any increase in density to that traffic study would require another traffic study to be done and include that. But we were told that no mitigation in terms of the increase in, in units would be required. But that still has to be determined, and of course, everything will be subject to review and approval by the city and the DOT.
They've actually scoped another study for this project specifically. So they've contacted us and DOT about a scope. So they will be reviewing it as a separate study from the downtown traffic study.
Okay.
So if it's going to be multifamily, why aren't we going for multifamily, is that a classification?
C1 Business District allows for residential uses, multifamily uses.
Okay.
Will these be affordable apartments?
I don't believe so. No, no, ma'am.
They'll be market rate.
Excuse me?
Market rate.
Market rate.
Mm-hmm. So not affordable.
Thank you.
Good answer.
Does that definition go on in the new UDO?
That's like a shoe, eh?
Very own.
Any further questions of the developer?
How many apartments are you anticipating?
We are anticipating approximately 260 units with this development.
That's the entire development, right? Not just this parcel?
That's correct. That's, that's the total.
That's everything you got, west of Park and east of Park combined?
That's correct.
This here...
How many stories are you planning for?
There's some amenities?
I think they're four stories. Yes. I think it's approximately three or four buildings.
Okay.
Are there requirements for green space or anything like that for the development itself?
I don't believe so, not, not in the C1 or overlay.
So there are no amenities at all?
They may still propose amenities. We're not, they're not, they haven't finished the design yet.
Okay. Will they be coming back to us with the design? No. That's what I was asking the question.
Yeah, because it's not a DRD.
Right. So we don't know.
They do come back with the DRD, final DRD, right?
This isn't a DRD zoning.
But they're going to have to follow all of essentially your downtown, your Greer Station, your downtown business district requirements, right? For setbacks, for parking, for...
There's no parking requirements to this, right?
There actually are. We redid that part of the code about two years ago to, for any residential, a minimum of one per unit instead of zero, really for this reason. They have indicated that they'll be doing more than a one ratio, just financing typically won't give financing for something that low, but I don't know the exact ratio. But they will have to meet at least one.
Entrance off 101.
There's entrance off of South Line Street and entrance off of Moore Street, and also Park Avenue and Trade Street. And we would adhere to all the city requirements in terms of setbacks, buffering, landscaping, and I believe sidewalk as well, proposing for all street frontages.
But apparently, there are no landscaping requirements.
So I guess, explain to me why we're not going for the residential multifamily zoning classification, more so going to C1. I know it's permitted in C1, but...
So I think there's no guarantee that this will be an apartment. It could possibly be developed as something else.
Okay.
So C1...
Allows for greater opportunity.
Well, you know, it's relating to the adjacent parcels, C1 is more appropriate in that area.
So if it's with C1, if it, if the apartments are not feasible, and they decide to change anything in that classification, they could do that without having to come back before?
Anything allowed by right. Correct.
Do you foresee that as a, as a possibility?
I don't think so. If, if, if the apartment complex is not feasible, they probably would not proceed with the project.
Does that change the C1 versus the multifamily? Does that change requirement for landscaping or buffers or empty space?
No.
Doesn't?
All right. Any further questions of staff or the developer?
Were the questions that the citizens raised, were they addressed?
I think one of their questions was the Central Business District.
That was mine.
Which is coming to us next.
Well, no, that was overlay, but...
Right.
But...
You also mentioned, I thought she raised a question on UDO or something to that effect.
Yeah, so in the UDO, it'll, so all C1 will be converting to Greer Station. So those are the zoning requirements that are related.
Which is going to be hopefully approved.
It's almost, I mean, it's very, very similar to, to our current C1 zoning. It's one of the districts that changed the least.
But we're still cleaning up some of the issues that we've had in the past there to make it better.
Well, we'd be open to feedback if you have specific changes you'd like to see.
Right. All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Tag it.
We have a motion in a second. Let's vote.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Asserno?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. And again, contact staff for next steps. And again, uh, contact staff for next steps. Appreciate you being here for that one. Uh, now, we will move on to new business for, uh, RZ 23-08.
This is RZ 23-08. The address is 108 South Line Street, and the request is to remove the Highway 101 overlay and retain the downtown historic overlay. Here's the aerial of the site. Um, here's the current zoning map. Here's the photo of the downtown overlay and the Highway 101 overlay. Here's a photo of current conditions. Once again, the request is a zoning map amendment to remove the Highway 101 overlay and retain the downtown overlay. Staff recommends approval.
And kinda looking at this, I assume the downtown overlay is a little bit more stringent than the 101?
It is, um...
From architectural standpoint, I guess?
From architectural finishing features, it's much more detailed. The 101 overlay more pertains to, like, buffers and screening, particularly for, like, um, commercial uses, um, that are more vehicle, um, oriented. So, um, it's a little strange to have two overlays.
And I'd imagine the layout or concept layout is probably gonna have the parking in the, in the center very much similar to what's been done over here at the...
At Parkview.
Yeah.
I think so. Um, they did have a conceptual at one point, but we haven't seen any updates, and I think, you know, we're curious to see as well what the updated design will look like.
What's the impact if you don't remove that overlay? Right now, I mean, both of them, both of them exist, you're removing the lesser of the two. What's, what's the true impact to this piece of property if you just left it alone?
If you let them alone, um, it would be really confusing for staff to enforce. If they conflict with one another, how do we decide what's more appropriate? Is it, you know, how do we apply that fairly to other, any other parcel that has that conflict?
Is this also being considered with the UDOs?
It is, um, I, so, the downtown overlay will be carried on the North Line Street portion, and we did a better job with the, um, transitional overlays into the entryways into downtown, so they don't conflict anymore.
Okay. But what is decided tonight is with the old UDOs, correct?
Correct. This is our current zoning ordinance.
Right. So, when the new UDOs take effect later this year, early next year, they're still grandfathered with what's done now?
Um, it depends when they submit their plans. If they submit after it's adopted, um, they'd be subject to whatever's in place at the time.
Okay.
Um, but all downtown overlay is proposed to transit, to transition to downtown transitional. So, similar, but a little less strict, but still has all of the architectural standards.
Such as materials, height. The, the height restriction will be changed, will it?
Nope.
Okay.
That's actually in the zoning district, not the overlay, and it's staying.
Well, to me, this is housekeeping. We're cleaning up something we stumbled into. Uh, I would say that, like I say, the questions we got on this one, probably the best I ever heard. So, thank you.
We, we appreciate when the citizens get involved. A lot of times, we're here by ourselves. A few times a year, we're not, but, you know, um, yeah. Okay, uh, do we have any further questions for staff or for the developer?
Move to approve?
Motion for approval, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Serna?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. Again, contact staff for next steps, and, uh, good luck. I believe that concludes the new business portion of our meeting, and, uh, now, we will move on to other business. Uh, is there a staff report for planning and zoning?
Sure, just short, um, we talked a little before the meeting. Um, so, the city hosted five public meetings for the Unified Development Ordinance and new zoning map, um, last week on Wednesday and Thursday. Um, we had a little over a hundred people come to those sessions and asked a lot of really good questions. Um, we're still combing through comments, and we'll probably be making some changes before we bring forward the adoption draft. Um, but there weren't a lot of key things. There are a couple changes people suggested that I think we're gonna take another look at. Um, I'd say the key theme of all of the meetings was really more of a curiosity, just asking questions about what it meant, um, what it meant for them specifically. Um, I think the highlight of those sessions was we pulled up the Interactive Zoning App that we had created just specifically for the UDO, and looked up their address or properties that they owned, if they had multiple, and kind of showed them what, um, the existing zoning was and what the proposed zoning would be. Um, and then, um, I gave you all a brochure. Those are what we handed out at the meetings, and they're also available on the website. Um, and so, we were able to then kind of open the booklet and show them what that new proposed zoning meant with the regulations. Um, so, we thought it went really well. We were really happy with the turnout. Um, and the next step is a public hearing with your board, um, next meeting. So, October 16th, you'll be having the public hearing for that UDO and new zoning map. Um, and then, it will go forward to city council. Um, the earliest potential adoption date is Tuesday, November 13th. Um, I'll, uh, of course, subject to change based on feedback that we receive from Planning Commission and/or City Council. Um, so, we did get a list of email addresses from everyone that attended, and we'll be keeping, um, anyone who left an email address updated on the project schedule as we move along. Um, and like I said, we'll be making a few changes from the public draft to the adoption draft, and we'll have it redlined in a spreadsheet for you guys to see what changed over the time. Um, so, I think that's it, um, other than, you know, it's September, we're nearing the end of the year, and everyone needs some training, so...
Um, I would like to say publicly, I had, I had a few phone calls after the meetings last week, and, uh, I wanna congratulate staff just for being on top of things and getting the information out there. Um, I, I had one particular, uh, resident that called me and were concerned that they don't live in the city limits, but they got a, a notice about it. And so, I assured them that, you know, I'm sure it's either a mailing mistake or the city's trying to go above and beyond and notify people just a little further out, which is the case.
Yeah, we did.
I got some clarification on that.
Yes, so there are some parcels that have an irregular boundary, and just to make sure with GIS that we made sure we caught everyone in the city, we did apply a .2 mile buffer, so there were quite a few people who received the mailer that aren't actually in the city. And we did receive quite a few phone calls and assured them that we are not, in fact, trying to annex them into the city, so...
Right.
Yeah, thank you for...
Well, thank you for what you guys have done. I know we'll all be glad when this process is over, um, and then we can start working on the next ten years, I guess, so...
And I stopped by, and it was, they had a great, they had a great presentation. They're fairly, very diligent. I mean, we'll just say the whole process. Staff's gonna, outstanding, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anything further for staff? Any, any, anything for the good of the, uh, commission? We have a motion for, uh, dismissal? We have a motion for adjournment, and I second that. We stand adjourned.